Do I use the gavel?
No.
Okay, Baker?
Here.
Henkel?
Here.
Key?
Here.
Merrill is absent. Robertson?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
He's here.
Simpson?
Here.
It's only us here.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Nope, okay. Approval of the April minutes?
So in front of you, I updated the minutes. Walt sent me the minutes, some updates to the minutes. It's this copy right here, the two pages. He has some updates. I'll go through them.
Okay.
And there were just some changes to some words. I put trail instead of trial. And then he asked a question about Noah Eisner saying that only fifty-five Atherton signers were on the pickleball thing. But he did say that. I confirmed it.
Okay.
You might point out my comment, which is where there's only fifty-five.
Fine.
And fifty percent are outside this, the town. Where's everybody else?
He said that the rest of, some of them were from all around the world.
I remember that.
Well, no, he said that. He only has fifty percent
From all over the world.
Of three hundred people are outside of Atherton and fifty-five are in. That would be sixteen percent are in Atherton, fifty percent are out. And where else, everybody else?
I'm not sure. We'll have to get clarification on his signature thing. But for practical matters for the minutes, we'll just go with what he said, even if it's inaccurate.
Okay, do we have a copy of his petition?
Is there air conditioning?
No, but I can ask for that.
Okay. One other typo at the top, it says roll CA, which I think means roll call.
Okay, yeah, I'll fix that too.
Thank you.
So you would need to, unless, if there's no other comments, you can approve the minutes as amended.
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Seconded.
My interruption is, is there air conditioning? Because these lights are really hot.
Let's see.
I hope they didn't spend all this money and not put AC.
Francesco will look.
Thank you.
It is getting hot in here.
It's the high-pressure stakes of parking wreck.
Um, okay.
So should we, so should we call the vote?
Call the vote for approving the minutes?
I need to do that.
Oh, I, okay.
You first and seconded it.
Okay, great. Okay. We don't have any presentations today. Moving on to the regular agenda, five A. Review and continue discussion of the possibility of adding pickleball courts to the Holbrook Palmer Park and a possible vote. Call on our subcommittee for that. Any updates?
I have a presentation.
Oh, wow.
You have a presentation for pickleball?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Yeah, we've, Taylor and I have met and we've discussed it with Julie, so that's why I wanted to share the, my computer.
Okay, you can share it now.
Okay, let me turn on sharing. Share screen. Share.
Make you a post.
Okay. You guys can see it, okay? Okay.
Yeah, very good computer.
You can look.
There's a glare.
Oh, okay, okay. So the, the subcommittee, we've met. And we kind of focused on what are our goals and what are the questions we're trying to answer? And the key things we're trying to meet as a goal in, in our study of what we're going to do for pickleball, short and long term is assess the community's interest. And then what are the possible funding opportunities based on that interest? Meaning, you know, the town or donors. Also, our goal will be to maximize recreation benefits for, for the town and its residents. And then also, as much as we can minimize the costs and disruption to other park users. So that's kind of what we, how we thought about going into it. So there are kind of some short-term questions, some long-term questions that we wanted to answer as part of our, our look into whether to have pickleball and Holbrook Palmer Park. The first question is, you know, how much is the community interested in pickleball? And then also, where are the, you know, some people have said there's going to be noise and such, so we want to find out, is it going to be a real problem? Or is it ones that people just have heard secondhand, it's going to be a problem? So we want to find out if that's really the case. And then also, how well will they be able to coexist with the tennis courts if they're in the same place as tennis? Whether the noise is going to be a problem or whether using one of the tennis courts is going to be a problem. And in terms of long-term questions, you know, where's the money going to come from? And how many courts are going to be needed long-term? Where are we going to put in the, the park? And then what is going to be the ongoing revenue and cost model? So those were kind of the main things we wanted to answer in our, in our study. So we came to a few areas of consensus. So we thought having a multi-month pickleball trial would be a good, good way to start. And we'd have to have a couple of those in good weather months so that we can get a good idea of what people felt was the amount of demand. And then based on that, we can ask people, you know, whether they're, they wanted to have something permanently there and how often they would play. The number of courts we'd want is at least two, you know, ideally four, but you know, we could probably do with two, just to, just to see as a baseline. And then, and then based on that, we can see if they're always being used or, you know, only one or none are being used. And then in terms of playing times during the day, we thought we'd start out with all day, every day at the start of the trial. So that we could just, people don't have to like check, okay, is it going to be, you know, ten AM to two PM? And then it'll be, won't be available from two to four or something like that. So having, having just that availability will be easier than we'll adjust as time goes on. If, if the trial is long enough to reduce the time if we're finding it's conflicting with, you know, tennis or something else too much. In terms of keys for pickleball, we want it to be free or at least a hundred percent refundable deposit. And that's really to kind of maximize the amount, find out what, what really is the level of interest from the community. And the reason why we want to be able to collect a deposit is that we want to be able to get some information about the people who are signing up for keys. And also how often they're using it. And, you know, follow up in terms of long-term plans. So, you know, if they liked it enough, would they be willing to, you know, help fund a long-term pickleball court or not? And how often they played too as well. So it will give us that type of information so that the town can, can kind of get a better gauge among pickleball users, what they should do going forward, if they want to use that information. And then in terms of why we also want to collect, get the key is that we, after we get their information, their email address, we can also do a survey of them. We can ask them questions like, you know, how often they use it? And, you know, are there things, are there parameters in the trial that we should adjust that would improve things? And we'd also ask the tennis players also in terms of their feedback as well. So that, that, as well as Menlo Park residents, because they're, if we put it near the tennis courts, then it's going to be a bugging them. And then at the end of the trial, we'll do kind of a long-term planning survey in terms of finding out, you know, where should we put it? And are you help, willing to help fund it? You know, what were the noise levels like? How often did you play? Things like that. So we get, ask a bunch of questions and so that the council can make a more informed decision on what, you know, how many pickleball courts, where they want to put it, things like that, that all the constituents can put their two cents in for that. And in terms of a reservation system for pickleball, at least for the trial, we are not thinking of putting that in. We just think it's just kind of too much trouble to do for such a short amount of time. So it'll kind of be a free-for-all in terms of whenever people want to come, they can come and play. And then and Julie pointed out that a lot of times the pickleball, they'll just, they have a system where you put your, your rack paddle, I was about to say racket, your paddle on the, on the court and then the next one to play. So the questions that we, that we have open as we're thinking about the trial is, where are we going to put this, this temporary pickleball court? So we, we can convert an existing tennis court into a pickleball court. You could maximally fit four, although it's probably better from a pickleball play standpoint to fit only two onto an existing tennis court. Four is kind of a very scrunchy and it's kind of hard to play side by side in another court. And the two options for using an existing task court is the hard, one of the existing hard courts or the clay court, which is less used, although clay court is probably not a very frequent place, court service to use for pickleball. And, and some other options are use the HPP parking lot area near the north lawn. And Matt also had the idea of using the area on the little traffic circle in front of the main house, using a portion of that as, for a couple, one or two courts temporarily for pickleball, since we're going to tear that place up anyway for circulation plan. So that, that's another possibility too. So that's still something to remain, remain open and happy to hear feedback on that once, once we, I complete this presentation. And then also, we'll need to measure pickleball usage as we have the trial. So we have to find a way to see how often it's being used. And, you know, there's a lot of different things we can think of, maybe have a court camera, because the tennis courts already have cameras there on top. So we could, you do that, a key card maybe, or, you know, something else, doing a survey every once in a while to see how often it's being used. Maybe just ask the key holders, how often they use it. So our next step, the subcommittee, we're going to ask Menlo Park and Redwood City on their experience with pickleball and see if they have any advice for us. We'll, we'll then reach out to Atherton stakeholders, which are pickleball players, player capital, tennis players, council members, town staff and Felton Gables, just to see, you know, their feedback on, on how they feel about a trial and things that they they would prefer in a trial and we'll try to find the best solution amongst them. And then also collect public and committee feedback. So I think that's the end of my presentation. Yep. So I'm happy to hear any comments or questions or feedback on any part of it.
Yeah, so Michael talked to me about pickleball and the tennis courts. And he really feels strongly against using the tennis courts even for a trial. He felt that the tennis courts are paid for and built by tennis players and that should be remained as tennis. So if a trial is the way to go, then we should, you know, you'll, you'll reach out to him as well and talk to him and talk to the stakeholders. But I don't know how well a trial would go in an area where we're not really welcome. So, and also it's incredibly close to the houses in the back there. If we use the clay court, I mean, we're already going to be annoying them with this. So, you know, proceeding with the trial, maybe the racquetball area or the area that I pointed out could be the, the better locations.
Yeah, that, that they, oh, yeah, we could do the racquetball too. It probably would cost a little bit more with the racquetball area because you'd have to tear down that wall.
Yeah.
So it, it's, yeah, definitely doable to possibly do others if, if we'll just pay a little more for the, the temporary.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's something we could, we could definitely consider.
Sally, can anybody hear me?
These courts would be used.
Don't know.
That's kind of where we're trying to do the trial.
Any estimation?
Hold on one second. I'll tell you when you can speak again. Yes, yes.
Yeah, we can hear you, Walt.
Oh, good. Oh, good. Okay, so as I said on our walkthrough, I think you need somebody to come through that really knows something about pickleball courts. I think there's no
You're, you're totally, you're on two systems. I think that's a problem. Or you're reverberating. We can't hear what you're saying.
And we were in the middle of answering your question.
Okay. Okay, how about now?
Yes, that's bad without the phone. Yes.
But let's finish answering Perry Lou's question.
Okay, Mary Lou, go ahead. I, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
How about now?
Ask a question right now and then we'll go to you.
Hello, hello.
Can you hear me now?
On the average, how frequently in these other places, is it normally midday? Is it in the, I wouldn't think it would be in the evening because we, would we have to put up lighting?
For the, we don't know. The trials, we're trying to find out what are the common times of play? And how often the courts are going to be used? If there's a large amount of interest and a lot of people waiting in line for play, then we know we should probably build more courts. If there's not a lot, then maybe we don't build any.
And I'll add to that. It is, it's become so popular that it's literally all day at some of these places that have put in, you know, sort of robust pickleball programs with several courts. So I think, you know, as Alex and Taylor and I, we were trying to determine some of this through the trial, but I would say that if it's as popular here at Holbrook Palmer as it is at some of these surrounding areas and elsewhere in the country, it's literally, you know, all day, starting very, in fact, Mitchell starts at seven AM. And they play into the evening.
Yeah.
So the popularity of it is immense. What we decide to do, obviously, will be based on what the local, you know, community sort of tells us.
Just to add, I think there's a really big crowd of people that go after work especially. So you do have a crowd of people that goes in the morning and uses it midday, but it's very popular in the evenings as well. So I think at least from what I've seen, almost every day in the evenings from about probably five o'clock until nine o'clock, you'll see the courts in pretty good use.
So is this like a pickup game that people just hope they find one in session that they can join?
They do a little of both.
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. So some of it is structured and organized, but just like as Alex was saying earlier during his presentation, you can just go drop in and you just put your paddle on the court and that indicates that you want to play. And when a spot opens up, then you can go and rotate in.
Second question with that, then do we need to provide seating for those that are waiting?
It's a good question. The benches would probably make sense, yeah. Which are generally what would be at a court anyway for people to sit down between games and that kind of thing.
I know a floating picnic table that we could use.
Now, you guys have seen some courts where you see a lot of, you set up to twelve courts were playing and people are rotating through. Yeah. Is there a certain, I mean, if we just had one pickleball court for four people, would it have the same popularity of some of these places with more pickleball courts?
Well, if you only have one, then you probably would have to do some sort of a set reservation.
Right.
Unless you were going to say, I mean, that's why we're gathering more information from some of these other places, but you, you, you could do something where you had a two-hour time period where people could just come and rotate through, you know, an open play. And then the rest of the time, it would be
So from a single trial court, we could probably still get some general interest because people could rotate quicker.
Right.
One court.
Right, yeah, definitely. And the games go pretty quickly. It's only to eleven points. So you can, especially depending on how experienced you are, you can play a game in ten minutes.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, Walt's going to speak now.
Okay.
Sally, can I be heard?
Yes.
Yep.
So you, you can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so three points. One, I don't think any of those are an option other than taking over a tennis court. And, but again, my view is you should get somebody there, subcommittee, that knows something about making a court available and usable. There's no way, in my view, having looked at a lot of these courts, that you can play on asphalt. Not going to happen. So the north, there's no alternative here for a test other than either take over the tennis court or, which isn't really a test, tear down the handball court and, you know, spend whatever it's going to be, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't make much of a test. At that point, we're going to do it. So I think that's the start of this. And secondly, I would go for a reservation system. Let's try to make it as compatible as we can with tennis. So that if they find that nobody's reserved for a time, Michael's point is the key holders have a right to those two courts. We can't take one of Michael's courts. We're contractually barred from that. We cannot play on clay, by the way, either. We've, we've discussed all that before. So the question is, how do you take a part of the use of those two courts? And it seems to me you have to set up a time when they're, when one's available and next. You have to figure out when tennis players are using this. I wish Michael had been here because the numbers of usage, if you look at the report we're going to get that we have in front of us, you know, it doesn't say that two courts are being used basically all the time. But I think you've got a real problem here, as Bob Roser pointed out, in doing something consistent. The other thing to remember is, every place I know that has pickleball now in a public setting is using a tennis court. None of them have gone out and built courts that I know of. Now, maybe you'll find that out, but you should find that out. Because then you could really get an idea of what this would cost, how it works, where they put them. Everybody else is just converting and Mitchell Park, I mean, these have huge numbers of tennis courts. We don't have that. We have two tennis courts available to both the public, our key holders, and for this test. So I would say have them sign up. Whether you charge them or not, you'll get the information that way that you're looking for, so you don't have to say deposit. And then notify people what time it is that they can play. And talk to Michael about when the two courts are really being used for tennis. It seems to me that's the only way to do a test here.
Yeah, that, yeah, would you like me to answer? Yeah, that's definitely a possibility. I mean, we're going to take this general proposal to the stakeholders and find out. So we'll ask Noah, can you play on asphalt? You know, is that going to be a problem or is it basically a no-go? Can you play on court? Is that going to be a problem or a no-go? So we'll, we'll find that out. And then we'll talk to Mike, right? And we'll find the compromise that works best amongst all the parties, that at least it's most workable. And there won't be anything perfect that will make everyone happy, of course, but we'll, we'll try to find something that will be able to get hopefully everyone to coexist with each other good enough that, that we can have a fair trial and, and see how it goes. There's, I agree with you, Walt. There's no, there's no perfect solution here. I mean, there's going to have to be compromises.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Rhetorical to the group. But while you made a comment, I'm not sure if you were, if you were kidding or not, but that there's enough interest or how was it put, that, that there are city council members that really want this to happen and that a trial may not be necessary. And I think that's worth discussing because if this is something that's going to get pushed through anyway, then are we going to an ex, you know, a lot of extra trouble that isn't necessary?
Well, what I said was two council members have mentioned that they are seeing a lot of interest. That doesn't, of course, push anything through. And nobody, that's the other thing you should do is get that person in or persons, find out what it costs to really put up a court replacing the handball A or moving it to another locate, and, and also the, the great location there that we talked about that's still near the train tracks, but is at the end of the field. And let's just find out what that is. That's what they're going to want to know. And then as Sally points out,
Gathering costs is
Sally points out, they're going to want to know how, how, how users can pay for this. And, you know, we can recommend that that not be the case, but again, I think we should be thinking about that too. So anyway, that's what I'm saying. And I'm not saying we're ready to just say our recommendation is to build a court. Because we don't have the information. We're nowhere near that point in my view.
Yeah, so I think the subcommittees, if you want to reach out to maybe a company and get an estimate, our staff can do that. Just to get like a ballpark figure on building a new court. I can look into that.
Okay.
Be helpful.
Would it be one for the racquetball, for one court where the racquetball is, and then three courts over in the corner of Watkins and the train tracks?
We would decide what we want to have them look at and give us an estimate.
Me to get an estimate in those two areas.
Yeah.
If you want.
So the two areas are the racquetball area and what's the other area?
The, this corner.
Oh, oh, yeah. Train tracks.
The grassy.
The grassy area, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I guess the cost per court would be because it might not just be one.
I feel like the cost for those two different areas will be different.
Yes. Oh, yeah. It will definitely
But the cost per court for those two areas, that's
And that person should also, since they've had experience putting them in, I mean, they may have some other suggestions if they come and say, okay, this is one option, we'll give you an estimate for that per court, and this is how many courts we think would fit there. This is the other area you want an estimate for. And then maybe have them look around and say, do you have any other suggestions about what might be, you know, other possibilities?
I agree with Julie. I think that's a good idea.
So, yeah, and I can also put that person into contact with the subcommittee or even have them come to a future meeting.
Yeah.
Great.
That sounds good.
I, I think that if the committee is going to have to hire somebody to do that analysis, you're going to have to go to the council because you don't have the money to do that.
I think a pickleball building company might come and give us an estimate because they're hoping that we'll hire them. I don't know, but I mean, they might just come and survey and give us an idea.
They'll give us a ballpark.
Well, if somebody has the information, we don't have to spend money to get it.
No, that's what I'm saying, is I don't think we were planning to necessarily
But I think if you're going to look at where the handball court is to build a pickleball court, there is going to require demolition of what's already there. So that's not just some number that somebody has for a pickleball court.
I mean, I mean, as a flat area, I guess, like the people who are resurfacing the tennis courts right now, they could give a free estimate on resurfacing the pickle, the racquetball area, for example.
But to Rick's point, are they necessarily people who have knowledge of how much it's going to cost to demo that wall and take it away? That's an additional cost.
Yeah.
So maybe that's something we have to get like a separate estimate. Or maybe somebody has had experience doing something along those lines and could just give us a big ballpark figure.
I could definitely get an estimate, yes, on the demo and also building a new court. And then for the other location, it would just be probably a lot of grading, but also just to build a court brand new from the bottom up.
Um, I, I think that would be a good start, just to find out what this is going to cost. And then the second part would be talking to council about the interest in possibly losing parts of the great lawn for pickleball, if that's, you know, that's in the circulation plan and stuff.
Yeah, you definitely need to make that request before you spend any money or go too much time into it.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking, it's a half a million dollars, but we can get donations for half a million dollars, but that no one is interested in losing parts of our lawn for it, then, yeah, there's no point to continue. The racquetball area, we can fit one to two courts over there. It doesn't look like it will affect any of the houses. But it won't be as the social scene as the pickleball that we see elsewhere, you know, around. It will be kind of tucked away from everyone. So inherently might not be as popular. But I, I kind of, I'm looking at the tennis, I'm just looking at the map here of everything. And like, the tennis courts were clearly added to Holbrook Palmer at some point in history. How did, how did that come about? I mean, was that in the seventies or eighties or nineties?
Sixties.
They were way back. So they've been there a long time. And, and, yeah, the question would be here is, is pickleball going to be around in fifty years? You know, and it seems to be growing. I mean, it seems like a very family-friendly, age-appropriate sports for everyone. So
It's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
The fastest-growing sport in the country.
So. So that's it.
The, the trial will, I mean, we'll get the, we'll get, Sally, we'll get the, kind of the generalized approximation from contractor. But we can, we don't have to make a decision for the trial. We can get that after the trial occurs and weigh against the level of interest.
Yeah, or if we just get, just skip right ahead and skip the trial and get the quotes for how much this will cost us. And, and the next part would be, if it's a half a million dollar project, we get a hundred donations for five thousand dollars or one donation for half a million. Or it comes out to be three million and that's bigger than we can chew.
Well, I, I think as part of the subcommittee's research is, we're going to contact one or more council members.
Okay.
And if they tell us that's what they want to do, then it will be out of our hands and we will let them run with it. That's perfectly fine as well. So, yeah.
Well, but as a subcommittee, you can't count, contact more than two people on the council.
Correct, yeah. And you are probably going to be one of them. So you're stuck with us, so you'll be one of them, yeah.
Have you played pickleball?
What?
Have you played pickleball yet?
No.
Okay.
Well, you need to take a minute to play.
So in the reservation system, I mean, we'll, we'll keep that as an option, Walt. It's, it's just for a trial. It might be a lot of trouble to set up for just, you know, a few months, so.
Well, my thought was, my thought was, we have that system. All people have to do is say pickleball versus tennis, seems to me.
I, I'm, I'm not sure if Michael will be as accommodating since it's not in his contract to do so.
Well, however, Michael is, he only gets a certain amount of courts and then he has to run the system for the other courts. So technically, if we say one of the other courts, we want pickleball, we can do that because those courts aren't in his contract. He has to oversee the system.
Oh, so we can use one.
Okay.
Because that would certainly
Yeah.
facilitate a much more cost-effective and easier trial.
Okay.
Again, if we go back to Again, if we go back to that, we need to do a trial, that would certainly make it a lot easier.
He would just need to change it so that how many ever courts we have, if it's two or four.
Just be aware, if you do a trial on the tennis courts, anybody who's going to be in that trial has to buy a tennis key to get in.
Yeah.
Can we have?
Well, that's what we were saying.
Yeah, a separate, a lot. Because right, well, for example, it was the clay court. Isn't that a separate key?
Uh, I don't think so.
Don't think so.
Okay.
It's a separate key.
I don't know.
The clay has a separate key and the rest are the same key, but yes, we could rekey whatever court we were going to use for the trial. Just make that a special key. I mean, people could still try and get in there, but.
Oh, they will.
But yes, we could rekey one court to be a different key.
Well, we could also require anybody who's going to play to buy a key.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
I mean, I do think we're going to get pushback because, you know, we only have two or three courts open to the public, right? And then we take one of those courts. So we're, we're really limiting their courts. And we're asking people to pay and they're losing a court if they don't want to play pickleball.
Remind me again, how many, how does that work? How many courts are Michael's for, for clinics or whatever he does? And how many are open to the public on a regular basis?
So Mike gets three courts. So then that would, that would open up either the clay court and two courts or three of the regular courts at any time. Sometimes Michael uses the clay court. So that would be three courts are open to the public.
Okay.
There's a total of six with the clay court. That's.
Six with clay.
Yeah, basically, there's your problem, as Rick mentioned, is, is with the tennis players.
Thank you.
You've got two courts that are available. The, the clay court's rarely used, I'm told, and you can't use it for your trial. So you've got two courts and you've got to make sure that the people that paid their money, and I think have a contractual right to pay, to play, maybe with a reservation, if that's the way it works now. So that's where you sit. Now, what you have to do, I think, is work around that. And you have to have a reservation system that maybe Michael would go for that says, yeah, if they haven't reserved five days ahead, then pickleball can have a certain time period where they convert the court. But remember, it has to be used, just like many of these others, has to be temporary. So you've got to have a time because people have to restripe it, things like that. So you really got a logistical issue that you have to deal with for this trial if we're not just going to build one.
So if, if we do put it into the reservation system, what we could do is if whoever reserves that time first, if it's a pickleballer, then the other three courts can only be used for, or two, or one other quarter, the three other courts on whatever the tennis court is converted into, how many number? Well, it'll just be pickleball time. And then if a tennis court, tennis person reserves it, then it'll be used as tennis time. Does that make sense? So if it's a court three and a pickleball user reserves three o'clock, that means the court's going to be, be used for pickleball at, at three until their reservation time is over. And then after that, if the first person who signs up is a tennis court user, then that will be tennis court time. Or we could have designated times that they could be used. So we, we can say like two to six is tennis and 10 to two is pickleball. So we, we can figure that out when we talk to the stakeholders and see what would work best. Yeah, there's a lot of possibilities. So we, we'll figure out a compromise that, that everyone will, will grudgingly accept, hopefully.
How are you going to talk to the stakeholders? What does that mean?
Oh, that means the three of us will meet with Michael, or, or at least one of us will. Michael will maybe Bob as a representative of the tennis players. And then one of us will talk to Noah. If there's other people in the community, pickleball or tennis community that want to talk to us, we'll, we'll talk to them and try and go through a few ideas for proposals, what works, what doesn't work. Michael to one to two council members, also about what they want to see out of this, what, what they're willing to compromise and staff as well.
Has there been a survey sent to the tennis players? Because there's a known number of people that have keys to the courts that play tennis. And if you would be taking 50% of the publicly available courts away from them, I can imagine there'd be a big reaction.
Yeah, we could, we could survey that. Yeah.
Right. I, I think that's pretty important.
Okay.
I mean, now maybe some of those tennis players would like to play pickleball. And because they know about it and it's pretty close to tennis, but they may not. I don't know. I know that there's been, you know, as Michael's organization took over, there was a lot of anxiety about what that was going to mean for public tennis. And we've gotten some comments, not many, but we've gotten some comments where people were concerned about them being limited to play as much as they wanted to. And that's something that we've dealt with. Taking 50% of their court away, it could have a big impact.
And again, just so we're all clear, that wouldn't be something that we would recommend on a permanent basis. That might just be a way to do the trial. Because if there is enough demand, the recommendation would be to build separate pickleball courts. Because we know that with only six courts, yeah, it's unlikely that we would get.
And, and they're not using all six courts at all times. So if during high demand times, they need that court, then we could say, okay, no pickleball on, you know, Friday, late afternoon, Saturday, late afternoons, which generally is going to be the time it's busiest. And then, so that's part of talking to each of the stakeholders and figuring out, we could do a survey. Although it will be hard to get that back and forth from a survey, but we could figure out something, what kind of information we could get that.
Well, you might be able just to find people that are willing to talk to you.
Yeah, well. I, I know Bob is, so I was going to reach out to him if he has other members of.
I think there's a couple hundred tennis court key holders, which are using the public court.
Okay.
How do we get that number?
200?
No, no. How do we get confirmation of what that number is and who those people are?
Francesca actually sells all the keys and has a list.
Ah.
Hundred and two. Okay.
But if we wanted to, if we wanted to talk to a few of them, we do a survey of all of them, we, we.
We have their emails or something like that. Okay.
Okay. Okay, cool.
I mean, the ideal, I mean, it would be interesting to know if there was, to your point, Alex, I'm just stream of consciousness here. But, you know, if there was sort of a dead time for tennis, that could be an interesting approach to start out to say, and I realize there probably isn't, but if there was, you know, say it was six to eight on a Friday evening, that they're just, for some reason, people just don't play tennis. You can get the movable nets and you, and you stripe the courts and you could just say six to eight is pickleball. And then let the demand, you know, dictate at some point that courts might need to be built. I don't know. I'm just adding to the discussion points.
I, I mean, I don't think we're beholden to like the permanent pickleball all the time during the trial. We could compromise and move that. So.
Yeah.
We'll take, we'll take in the, the feedback as we talk to the stakeholders.
Okay.
Um, so I guess you'll bring in this back to a future meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah.
Okay. July. Okay. Well, that's true, Joe. Great presentation. Thanks for continuing to look into this. Lots more to learn. All right, we're going to move on to 5B review and update park fees for the June public hearing.
And so, yeah, city council reviewed the recommendation that they made at the April 20th meeting. It will go back to council in June for a public hearing. So it will be part of the, the fees will be part of the big package of the fee schedule, the fees that get approved in June.
Yep.
So we would just put those prices in there and they would be approved as one package, as one group. That's what I was under the assumption. So I wanted to go over some of the feedback that was given. Toledo suggested a race cross to non-residents, like we talked about in my walk through. And to round to a zero, he also would like the number of people for an outside space to go down before requiring a building rental to be 50 people. I got, we got a couple of comments about lowering it to 50 people.
It was 75 before.
It was 75.
50.
You also agreed to lower it to 50 and to compare prices with other rental facilities and, and the goal, I like the simple numbers. It was a lot easier. And then Winmer liked the day use second fee and agreed with more analysis of pricing. I just really wanted to just give you the feedback on it. I'm not sure what, you already gave the recommendation, so it's more just working with staff to get it to where it needs to be for the public hearing. Do you have anything to add?
I think that's it.
Do, do you want me to update the spreadsheet?
Yes, if you, if you could update the spreadsheet and get that to me. But so I can get a staff report or whatever I need to do for the meeting.
Try to get that to you by the end of this week.
And I can, after you send it to me, I might have to tweak it a little bit. I'll talk to George and see how he wants to present it at the meeting.
Yeah, the, the pricing and the pricing changes in which council member Plato wanted to move the price up for non-residents and possibly also move the price down for residents. At least I, when I ran to.
The comment about rounding it to zero was rounding it up in every case.
Always rounding up in every case. Okay, okay. Round up. Okay. Round, round up to zero.
I was under the assumption from the meeting that at this time, we won't, we won't do a lot of analysis because we're not really changing the number. In the future, if we're going to do it, we should do an analysis. If we're going to go up or down in a large way, then we'll.
Yeah, if. And then, and then I think the council probably can give us more specific feedback about resident pricing and non-resident pricing. If they want higher non-resident pricing and then maybe lower resident pricing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was that comment, but there wasn't any further, you know, assessment or inquiry.
That's what I was going to, so when they vote, do they, do they vote yea or nay to what's presented, or do they vote and say, but with this adjustment to resident, non-resident?
It was just for feedback. I mean, it was just to present the recommendation, get feedback because it has to go to the public hearing.
So.
The special meet, it's not special, but.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, it's a public hearing. So they couldn't vote on it then because if you're going to change fees in town, it has to be a public.
But the resolution was for staff to revise the report.
Yeah.
So I think that the subcommittee can revise the report and give it to Sally. And, and then George will put it into a staff report from him that will no doubt make some changes.
Okay. And then if council wants us to look at moving the pricing, then we'll wait till that feedback comes back. In terms of, in terms of that move up and move down based on resident, non-resident or looking at.
In terms of the non-resident issue, I, I think that, I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't, I think Sally correctly reported that there, I think Bob was the only person to reference that.
Person.
Oh, good.
I, I will say Bill Widmer stopped me at the Earth Day and said like, that's a good idea. We should do that.
Can we as a committee say we strongly oppose? I realize we may not all agree, but I just want to ask the question that we strongly oppose any increase for non-residents. I realize they may end up doing it anyway, but.
I can mention that to George, but to get this into the, the public hearing and to be part of the whole budget, I mean, we're trying to do the, we would need to do this at the June meeting, but if you want to study this further and start like again, like if you want to like, I was, I would suggest if you want to take that on, we'll, we'll do this. And then you'll take that on as a separate thing. Because we can change.
I, I don't want to take it on unless I get some clear direction from council in terms of how they want it adjusted. Because you can do it so many different ways. And the market analysis part is going to be, I don't exactly know how to do it because this is not something I, I would do regularly. And maybe call other places and say, okay, this is kind of like Jennings Pavilion, I think, and what do you guys charge?
I think the.
I mean, I did it previously. I just pulled, you know, and Cassidy could also do this.
Okay.
She probably has more experience of just doing some type of analysis, but I'll get feedback from George.
Okay.
On how he wants to proceed with it.
I, I can give you my gut feel for it, which really wasn't discussed at the meeting.
Yeah.
But I think that if there's some general comparative value and pricing analysis done, that the ideal would be what the fair, sort of the, the high end of the fair market value, it's probably a range, is what should be the non-resident pricing and resident pricing should be a discount. So basically, residents get a benefit because they're town residents. And whether that's, I don't know what it is right now. It's 10 or 15%, I'm not sure.
You get, you get the base rate, then you multiply it by 15 if you're a resident or 30% if you're a non-resident.
So it's a 15% discount for.
Technically, it's 13% because of the way that, because you're comparing 115 versus 130, but.
Okay, but there'd be, I would think there'd be one price and then the other price would effectively be a discount for residents. But it's certainly not, in my opinion, not a step up in price from what is determined to be fair market value for non-residents. That I don't think anybody implied that.
That, no, that's good to hear. The other thing I still think that I will push for is I just believe in starting with a strategy or, for lack of a better term, sort of a mission statement about what we're trying to accomplish. Because I feel like we started from a place of just adjusting prices rather than saying, are we trying to maximize profitability? And if that's our goal, then that dictates how we would price, both residents and non-residents. If our goal is to maximize usage of the facilities at a fair price, or you don't even have to just maximize use as a public park and trying to get as many people to use the facility as possible, that would dictate where we would go with pricing because we would want to make it as affordable to as many people as possible. So if there's any way to just include something like that, and I think this committee is the committee who would determine that. This is the mission of Holbrook Palmer Park. We, and it can be, you know, there can be primary and secondary, or there could be dual objectives. But maximizing profits is very different from maximizing use.
I think the. Or even limiting use and just saying, we'll charge a very high price, but if you really want to use it, you can use it. And I mean, then we really, really limit the negative effects of having large parties, but, you know, limits the revenue, but that might be okay if that's what the council wants.
I think the intent of this project was to simplify the numbers on the website. So we weren't doing all this crazy math.
No, and I know that's where we.
Focus on.
I know that's where we started with simplifying, but I just also think having an overall.
Let's not let it get too, I think that as phase two would be great. And then phase one is simplify the numbers. You guys did a great job with that. Round them out to zeros. Keep the 15% discount for residents and non-residents for now. And then do a deeper analysis maybe for next year. After COVID is kind of hopefully better and we can do some baseline numbers. Would that be a?
I, I would only ask that the council provide some direction about the, what, what they want to maximize, what they want to get out of it. Then that will help me.
Yeah.
If I do, and then some analysis.
I think for now, the, the website would be updated with just nice even numbers and it will get rid of this really bizarre numbering and pricing. That, and then we can see how catering two is doing for the next year during, now that it's a little better out there. And we can get some more baselines. So. All right.
Clearly, when I was at the council meeting.
Review city council changes of the recommended parking rec donation policy. And so I just wanted to go over the, the comments and changes. It will go to the next council meeting as part of the consent calendar. So it means a council member can pull it off of there, but if the policy looks good, it will just. One is just for your information, go over the things that they wanted to change. Do you have a copy of this? So in the first paragraph under purpose, they want to get rid of, rid of the word monuments. They do not want to add 10th Town Center as this donation policy. It would be a whole nother different type of policy. It's just a different type of place. So they don't want to have that included. Their definition of donations. Number three, monetary donations to fund a specific or unspecified property for maintenance in the park. They want to get rid of that. The main focus is they wanted to just have this be focused on the town and not have it be any focus on the foundation. So that's why they're taking out number three.
Now Walt explained that a little bit to me about the park foundation. Money is not going to go to the foundation anymore. It's going to go directly to the city.
No, no. Mi- money can definitely go to the foundation. There is a statement that remains in the policy about how the foundation funds different projects and people can contribute to the foundation. The references to the foundation with respect to money that's donated to the town was taken out. with respect to money that's donated to the town was taken out because city manager said it wasn't appropriate to reference the foundation in that context, but I would say that the attitude at the council was 100% that the foundation should continue to do the work the foundation has done with, you know, without any adverse impact on it whatsoever.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
My understanding that the money used to go to the foundation for tax benefits for the donation, the person making the donation.
Yeah, so the, the building of the town center, what that did that's different.
Yeah.
Is that the town started to receive donations and send the donors donation letters so they could get a full tax deduction.
Okay.
So they, if somebody donates to the town or to the foundation, they're gonna get a tax deduction in either case.
Okay.
I think Walt had a question.
Yep.
Well.
Right, and I just wanted to mention that for 13 years, this committee operated with its informal policy that had, of course, the foundation. We didn't add anything to this, but as Rick points out, it was different. And of course, once George saw it, he said he didn't think it was appropriate to direct to any nonprofit, anything in a town policy. So what I suggested was they take out all the references that would direct and instead keep the one that, as Rick says, points out that the foundation's available. When I said that money was not to be donated to the foundation, what I meant was that George wants, as Rick points out, anything that's being done for the town for a specific project, i.e. the tree and things like that, will all go there. As far as extra money, well, we don't think there could be any extra money that's going to be donated for the tree and so on. All of this had to be used for maintenance. But if there's then extra that is for a project, like what the foundation did for the event garden and for the tower and for the bridge that we all saw today, that's all funded by the, the foundation. And there's no reason not to continue that. So this is the compromise that's been put in there. One I don't understand, Sally, is what's wrong with the criteria for acceptance that you highlighted? That says, in the opinion of the town and/or the park and rec committee, a facility may be deemed to be fully developed. I think, I think George didn't like that because he thought it gave park and rec too much power. And so, but I don't see any reason. It seems to me we should have that, so the donors know that they-
I think that was okay. Did he take that out?
Didn't make a comment on that. Can you tell me what page that's on?
Page four. Criteria for Acceptance is the title of the paragraph. It's nicely highlighted.
I think I might have taken out, it might have also said, I'm not sure. I'll get back to you.
No, I think it's, I think he thought that the town wants to maintain control. There was a flavor of that here. And of course, what we really meant was that you, Sally, or somebody else in your position says, I'm sorry, we can't put it right there. We want people to know that. And that this is a fully developed area. So maybe it should be in the opinion of the town after consulting with or something like that, so George is happy. But he doesn't want, I think, park and rec to say, we are telling you town that you can't have people donate in this spot, which we never would anyway.
Right. And then the cost of the amount that would either come here to city council, it's still up in the air. I will get feedback from George. The, the park and rec recommended $10,000 to be approved here before it wouldn't need to go to council. But that might, that, there was a lot of debate about that number at the city.
More in the range of 2,500 versus 5,000.
And so that will get to-
Problem is that 2,500, excuse me, 2,500 means virtually every donation would have to go to the-
That's exactly the comment I made at the council.
So-
Because I'm gonna go over the numbers right now for the trees, just for your information. So I was directed to get costs for larger box trees and have that be offered. So what I, for some of the smaller ones, this is what I did. I did, I got the cost from our new landscape company for how to plant, the cost of the material and planting it for all the different types of box trees. And then I added either $3,000 or $3,500 for watering and maintenance for at least the first few years, because after that, I mean, we're not gonna make people pay. I just want to make sure that we're getting enough, the donation is enough to, you know, support, support the item for a little bit. So the new fees are for 15 gallon would be 33, $3,305. A 24 inch box tree would be $3,576. 36 box tree would be $4,669.
It's a wood 24.
That would be a 36 inch box. 48 inch box would be $6,460. And then I even did a 60 inch box would be, be around 10,000, it would be $10,050, which I can adjust the numbers. I just wanted to make it so that the 30, I wasn't just being random about how much adage I was putting on.
There were a couple of comments about 15 gallon being too small.
Yes, but since then I received a couple of comments from people that they would like that to stay on. I mean, maybe we don't really want people to do it, but some people would like that to stay on because that's what they would want to, that's what they would want to donate.
Oh, dollar wise.
Yeah, so.
But the 15 gallon and 24 inch box was pretty close, right?
Yeah, so we could probably take up the 15 and just, but I would like to keep the option of a 24 inch box.
Definitely.
It was just about a couple, $400 difference or something.
Yeah, and their estimates, so I'd say be sure to round the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I will be, I will be updating the policy with all of these edits, giving it to George, so that he can present it at the next council meeting.
Sally?
Yes.
At the bottom of page four, because you're adding more sizes, there you say that only a 15 gallon or 24 is possible. So you should add these other dimensions there.
Perfect, thank you.
The other thing I'd like to ask is, having bought a few of these plants, I mean, a 15 gallon, let's say it could be, a very nice one could be bought for $500, I'm sure less. So we're gonna tell people that seven times that amount is needed to support this tree where, I mean, planting, which 15 gallon, as we know, you and I could plant that. Really gonna say that to people and the 24 inch too, or are we just being sure that if it has to have an arborist come or something else? Because if I looked at this, I'd be shocked, frankly.
And so that, that's more for pruning. I mean, it is expensive to prune. If we're taking a donation, we don't want to just take the material and labor costs. We want to make sure, especially with something that's alive, that we're at least recuperating a little bit of our money. Otherwise, we won't be able to take donations. Because I have a very limited tree budget for the park, tree maintenance budget. So we won't be able to take more trees if we don't get, recoup some of our costs of maintaining trees.
Maybe what would satisfy Walt is, you put on this appendix A, is that you let people know 3,000 or 3,000 plus is gonna be toward maintaining the tree for the next three years. So that people know that, oh, I'm not just buying the tree, but also I'm paying someone to maintain that tree, so that it actually will, will last longer than, than a year.
And also, if you want to give me feedback, I can lower that. I just wanted to make sure some of our costs were covered. I, it, it doesn't make any sense from a budget standpoint if I just take $500 for a tree, because-
I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. What I was saying was, the multiplier is so great that, and what you should do is at the bottom of appendix A, where you say costs include shipping, handling, plaque and installation, you should obviously put maintenance in there too. Maybe pruning, maintenance, so people really understand what we're doing.
Good point. Maintenance for the life of the tree.
Any other comments on this? Otherwise, I might send it, when I make the edits, I might send it to Walt, because I would consider Walt the co-committee before I give it to George. And then, yeah, I'll send that to you this week or early next week. And if you can just give your final sign off, Walt, then, then we can get that going.
If you're gonna do it past Sunday, you will have to send it to Italy, so I would suggest. Sooner rather than later.
I will send it tomorrow or Friday, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Sally, when was that project started? You said like 2013, this document?
Oh my gosh, this document. I know, and like you said, like you said, the foundation was always in there. It wasn't like we were trying to, you know, you were trying to sneak something in. It was always in there, so. It was a surprise, but I understand where George is coming from.
No, it was 13 years old. It was started in 2009.
No, either one is a trap.
Great accomplishment, everyone. Good job.
Well, it hasn't passed council.
Almost.
It might get lost.
Closer than ever. Okay, we're gonna move on to section 5D, updates on the prioritized park projects and goals.
So I don't have a lot of updates. I did want to update you, like I said, on the park walkthrough, but I wanted to make it official that the council approved the new landscape company's contract. It, we are expecting them to begin June 1st with a couple of weeks of overlap with MCE for some cross-training and to get them up to date with the, all the technology for the landscape here.
And the council asked to have them come before this committee, so the committee could meet them.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Thank you. So basically, what we used to do before all these changes is everybody that, a stakeholder in the park, which I would consider now the landscape company a stakeholder, would come to a, a meeting, one meeting once a year, just so you can ask questions and get feedback. And so we would have MCE come, but because of all the transitioning, I just haven't had them come. And so that company is Brightview, just so you know the name. And they should be in the park Monday through Friday. And that's all the information I have right now for that, until they're really on board. And let's see, what else? Carriage House, there's no updates.
Wait, Sally, is it possible to try to schedule them to come to the next meeting?
Yes. And so the, oh, we're gonna vote to see if we have a June meeting, but yeah, if it's June or the next one, I'll do that.
Is this an opportunity for, if MCE is moving some of their stuff out, like the dumpsters and all those things? Is this a time that we can change some of that, of the background back there?
I don't know that they're moving anything out.
I'm not sure who's gonna be moving anything out.
I don't know if MCE was leaving equipment behind, or if that was how they did things.
MC is still gonna do buildings in the park. They're just not gonna do the landscaping.
Okay.
So they'll still be doing, oh, you mean in the park?
Yeah.
I thought you meant here, I was like-
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm pointing towards the park, so.
I mean, we're still not finished yet. I mean, there's still a lot of things even here that need to get, be rid of. But once we do, once we finally get to the final part, I will see what can be pulled. Those dumpsters should be put back in this courtyard, actually.
Great.
So that should happen, but just follow up with me one more time.
I just know when, sometimes when companies are transitioning, the old company will leave a lot of their old stuff behind and it's kind of a nice time to shake things up and clean things up a little bit, so.
MCE will be staying at the courtyard here, so they will be keeping them at those, but yes, so those should be transitioning back, but yeah, I understand. Carriage House bathroom remodel, there's no update. I will, I will try to get with Robert on that. We had an architect, but I don't, I don't know what happened. Circulation plan, I also have no update. It's really bad. It was already supposed to be started.
Yeah.
It's, it's bad.
Whose job is that to get that?
I mean, so Robert's the city engineer and he's, he worked on all the grants and, and we hired somebody, a contractor, to oversee even this process. But the contractor hasn't really been working out. So I'm not sure where we are right now. The drawings, I think, are 90% finished. But we need them finished, so we can go out to bid for a contractor. And hopefully we'll have, move in on that by the next meeting, because that's a big project. Pricing rental, you, I think I'll take that off, unless you want to add that on as a new project for phase two.
I will wait for council, council direction before adding it on to phase two. I think next fiscal year, we may have pickleball on there.
And then we're gonna wait a little bit longer until this opens for the signage. So I think that's-
Well, regarding the signage, just seeing the new buildings with the new signs on them, probably, sign committee.
It gives us a font to start with, anyway.
Yeah.
That's all. Not a lot of updates.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna take a vote on canceling the June meeting, through the staff being out.
I won't be here for June. I'm taking a medical leave for a few weeks. So it was suggested to me, rather than have somebody else run the meeting, if, if, if there's not a lot of hot topic items that will be on the next meeting that we could consider canceling it, we don't have to do it and somebody else can cover the meeting. So it's, this is your vote, this is up to you.
Sally, if we, if we delayed it by a week, but that's still not satisfy your schedule?
No.
Okay.
We generally take August off, so would that, would taking June off be in lieu of, of taking August off?
You can also vote to, you can vote to have August back in. You already voted to have it off, but you can vote to have August back as a meeting? Or you can just have June and August off. We just have to notice it. So really, it's up to you, but we just have to notice that we won't have a meeting, or if we were planning on not having a meeting, we would notice that we would have a meeting.
Is, is there anything that is coming for June that we, we need to act on, like the circulation plan or anything?
You tell me.
Well, I mean, well, I can't tell you if the circulation plan is coming.
It sure should be coming.
If the pick, if you think pickleball will be at the next meeting, then you would want to. If you don't think it's gonna be ready for the next meeting, then I, then that's up to you. Rental fees is completed. The policy will be completed, so I don't know. Are there other topics that you want to start discussing?
So the circulation plan does not require us to make any action before it can proceed to council, is that correct?
Because we already asked for all your input, but once I have information or I have a full set of plans, I will bring it to you. I want to keep you on the loop.
But we don't need to vote on anything. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Well, regarding the June meeting and August meeting off, maybe we keep the August meeting and we just drop the June meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, yeah, yeah. And then the, I want to ask my other committee members, do you think anything for pickleball that we need, we want to decide? If we do a trial and we want to aim it for some part of summer, then we probably have to move fast.
I know, we lose a lot of time if we don't.
But if-
But if we don't think we can get it all done in time to do the trial, I don't know. That's, it's a, that's a tough call, because we wouldn't be coming back together.
For July.
Maybe the second week of July, because July 4th. Do we, we usually do the July 4th on, um-
I think July 4th.
Is on a Monday.
Monday.
So I think we would meet on the 6th.
Yeah, we'll meet, okay. So it's a tough call.
Well, the subcommittee can continue to meet.
Here's another question. Who takes your place if we decided to, and would you be offended?
I'm not gonna be offended. Francesca already said she could do it. It's just my, my boss suggested just maybe canceling the meeting if there wasn't any.
We, we could have an emergency, emergency meeting where just that one topic is covered if we feel it's necessary.
I just want to make sure that the staff here present would be able to set up the whole trial thing while I'm gone.
But it's gonna take longer.
Yeah, I think council will have to approve it.
Yes.
No, 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 it, it's gotta go to the council.
Right, so, so, so if you want to talk about it-
And, and if there's any funding, it's gonna take months.
Okay, so then it's not happening right away. So then taking June off is fine.
Okay, okay, okay.
I mean, we have 13 years to do the-
I don't see a lot of things happening within the next month.
It, it's already too late for this year's budget, so it's gonna take months.
Yeah.
I mean, typically, we adjust the budget in January. But not-
We could bring something to the table by that.
For next, for next spring. It won't cost a whole lot, so. We hope not.
Okay.
So yeah.
I, I, I think the bigger issue is the circulation plan, because like Sally said, it should have been started by now.
Yeah, the project that- Yeah, the project, but, but even if we got the plans tomorrow, it would still be a month before we even put it out to bid.
Right, right. So it's probably all at the root.
Now, have we officially already taken August off officially?
Usually, well, the parking rec usually votes to take August off because the city council takes it off.
Yeah.
We, you just, we used to just want to take it off as before the summer.
Well, discuss that in July.
But we can also vote on that in July.
In July, exactly. I was wondering if we should do one, yeah.
Just make a motion right now.
I, I moved to take next month off.
Could I make a comment first?
Yes, well.
Could I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Walt.
I, I talked to Michael once. I think his comment was the summer is a slower time on the tennis courts. Strangely enough, he says people are gone and he doesn't have, he doesn't see the same demand by the key holders, if I recall right. Maybe he was talking about lessons, but if, if that's so, then we'd like the trial, it seems to me, to be going on in August. And, and maybe that's not the right concept, because if tennis players don't play, maybe pickleball players don't play either. But to try to minimize the disruption, I'm wondering. So in any case, I would be prepared to have a special meeting whenever you're ready to talk about it. But I would also support meeting in July and then deciding on August.
You're right, we can have a special meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I think that's particularly right, that if you're gonna use one of the tennis courts, then there's obviously a great deal less cost. That could be done much, much more quickly.
Yes.
Right.
Buy the portable tent, or tent, the portable net and striping and you're basically done. I mean, we could all pitch in and pay for that.
And Noah might come up with that, with his group.
Of course, I should have thought of Noah.
So who first, who was the main?
I made the motion, the second or the third, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need a vote or?
No, it's fine.
We can just get together in person and now we're not getting together.
Okay, where are we?
All right, number six, discussion items. We don't have any today, moving on to section seven. Committee and staff comments, foundation report. Frank's not here, maybe Walt can give a report.
Do you have a report?
Well, I can just say that at this point, the foundation was very interested in, you know, and what, what's happening, pickleball, things like that. They did report that the foundation has funded some improvement in the main house where a lot of, or a number of the historical relics can be shown. They were removed because there was no lock on the cases. So the foundation's actually done that, come, put locks on it, and we'll have that in, in the, in the spot. I think maybe it's in the bride's room, but anyways, it's worth spiffing up the house a bit. So anyway, that's what is going on right now. The foundation also has prepared a brochure, which they would hope to send to the entire city that really highlights the park. That also highlights the foundation and asks people for their $50 yearly amount, so they're members of the foundation. But that's really gonna be a, a new, new communication. They're also gonna have those brochures. They sit right now, I think, in the, in the civic center and some in the park. Cassidy, oh, I'm sorry, Cassidy has them actually in, in the, in the civic center. And she's gonna use them with, with, with people that are coming in and ready. So we're trying to spiff up the, or increase the use of the park where people can see the reasons for that, other than, of course, rentals, which we don't have anything to say about. So anyway, that's another thing. And this council spent, the commit, the foundation board has spent a lot of time on this, trying to get this ready and highlight the history and things like that.
Thank you, Walt. 7B park going on report and updates.
MCE spent a lot of time, because we had this month or last month, we had a lot of events. We had the e-waste event, we had Earth Day, which is huge, and then we had Arbor Day. So there was a lot of prep for all those things. They did a lot of hand pulling of weeds, even though there's still a lot more weeds. Those are just the main things.
I heard great things about Earth Day, by the way. So whoever was involved in that, congratulations.
Yeah, it was a big event. I wasn't involved at all. I heard it was one of our biggest events.
Is there something we? Go ahead, Walt.
Could I ask a question about the staff report? It does have the tennis numbers there, and I would encourage the subcommittee to look at those and look at them in, in the past reports. Talk to Michael, because on its face, it would look like there were 149 uses of the, in the entire month for the tennis courts by key holders. That's five a day, playing, you know, doubles and so on. Anyway, you can see how little usage there is, I think. And then he talks about 217 out, public hours there. So again, if you divide that by 30, you know, there's, there's room for us to, to squeeze in for our pickleball experiment, is what I would conclude. But you need to check that out with Michael, please.
He just started giving us those numbers. He was very reluctant to give us those numbers. And he said he would just do it temporarily because of the pickleball issue. But I told him, no, we want those numbers continuing. It's part of your contract.
I think that's.
So maybe he didn't want to give us the numbers because they're low? I'm not sure. He said it was a lot of extra work, but it's part of his contract to give us.
What, what stands out to me is the clay court booking, zero hours a whole month, like nobody is using.
I've only heard that he's the only one that uses it when he needs extra classes. So what I was gonna do is, once the three courts that are, that are getting done right now currently get finished, I was gonna look at the clay court and see what we could do to refurbish it. We do have a little bit of money. So see if we can use that and see what we can do to bring it up. I mean, I don't think it's gonna ever be one.
Up to be useful as a clay court?
Yeah, to be a clay court, clay court. Because I don't think you can play on the clay for, I was told that you couldn't play on the clay for pickleball, but.
No, 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 but you could resurface it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Turn it back into.
Turn it into a hard court.
Yeah.
It wasn't donation, so I'm not sure what we have to do with that.
Right.
But how do we know that, since the clay court hasn't been with us that long, but it's already degraded to a point, how do we know it's not gonna happen again?
The clay court, the reason, a lot of the reason why it wasn't maintained was because of the watering system we have in the park. Sometimes we have to shut off the wells when we have breaks, which happen quite a bit, because we have an old irrigation system.
Yeah.
So with the new landscape company, we do get an irrigation specialist. So hopefully that will help us with some of our irrigation issues. But that said, if we just put a regular court in, there wouldn't be issues, because the issues with the clay court is because we, we have to keep it at exactly the same temperature. There's some shade on one side. When we turned off the well, there wasn't getting water, so it like degrades. So if we resurfaced it or started from scratch, I don't know how you would do it now, now with a clay court, because there's a whole water system underneath it.
Yeah.
That's, that's an option, but that, that's also gonna be an expense.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
I just meant in the meantime, just to get it, so maybe one, a few more people would use it. But yeah, that's something.
Yeah, but my concern also is that ensuring that this doesn't degrade again, because just having the irrigation specialist doesn't mean that the irrigation will be fixed. They'll just maybe have to have someone keep looking at it, which is also inexpensive. They have to keep coming back over and over again.
So something that we, something that wasn't taken into account, I wasn't the park manager when we accepted this donation, but something that wasn't taken into account when we accepted the journey, maintenance of clay court takes. And we don't have staff to maintain it. And Michael was supposed to maintain it somewhat. I just think it was a combination of just not having the experience or just the time to maintain a clay court. Because you don't have to maintain a regular court, you just have to resurface it.
Right. Question, because I want to make sure I understood you correctly. Did you say that if there was discussion about when the other, when the courts next to the clay court are being resurfaced, going ahead and resurfacing and turning the clay court into a hard court, is or is not possible with the irrigation?
I think you would have to, I don't think you can just put, you can't resurface it. You would have to do something like we're doing now, where you would have to add like an asphalt overlay. Because it's a clay, it's not like a even court. So you would have to do an asphalt overlay and then resurface it.
Isn't that what they're doing at the courts right now?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Then why? But just use to resurface the courts.
Okay.
Right, which is just a thin layer.
But could we get approval if they're gonna do two of the three?
I'm thinking, consider we can talk to the person that put the court in as the same person redoing our court, Saviano.
Okay.
I can just see what his opinion would be.
I, I think it's worth doing.
Yeah.
I mean, if the court's not being used.
Yep.
I, I, Atherton's always clear with any donor that we don't have an obligation to maintain it. I mean, we have maintained that court, but we've had some problems because of the irrigation, which I agree with what Alex said. Changing the landscape management doesn't change the irrigation system. And they might be changing some of that irrigation system over time, but I don't think they're doing. We're gonna change the irrigation system in the circulation project for the area that we're addressing in the circulation project. But that's not gonna change it for the court. And if the court isn't used at all, it's worth considering it when we're completely redoing two of them.
Eliminates the maintenance cost.
And then that would present an opportunity for pickleball.
And it, yeah, definitely helps the case.
When, when are we resurfacing the last two courts?
I'm looking to get those done next year. I mean, at, at the end of this year, I mean, the process will start once these other two courts are done.
They're, they're being budgeted now. So they're going into the budget for 23, 22, 23.
So hopefully, at the, by the end of this, the new fiscal year starts soon, but at the start of the fiscal.
Yeah, so just spitballing a bit here. You could, you could put an asphalt overlay over the clay court.
Yeah.
And then turn the farther court closest to the park into pickleball courts.
Or, or a combination court.
Or a combination court, yeah.
And that could be the trial.
Well, but it's not being done till next year. So if we have an answer.
Yeah.
By the end of this year.
Yeah.
We could then decide.
Though, I think, I think those two court, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the two courts that haven't been resurfaced are the most desirable courts. And the only reason that they weren't resurfaced was because you have to go over them to get to the three that were resurfaced. So it made more sense to leave them to be resurfaced in the second go around.
Well, I, we could.
They're the most desirable courts. So I think if there was a court to be used, it would be unlikely to be one of those two.
I would say you would use the furthest one in the corner next to the.
Which are closest to the Menlo Park neighbors.
Yeah.
No, but the ones closest to the Little League fields.
Oh, okay, turn one of those into.
Right behind the bathroom.
The only thing is, they're probably gonna be repainted by then. And I'm just saying, you probably save money.
Yeah.
If, because next year, those are the three, the, the two or three courts are gonna be the ones done next year. And then you're gonna repaint them. And you're gonna put, you're gonna put nets, permanent nets somewhere, right? Instead of doing that.
And putting in everything new, because they're, they had to.
Yeah. So if you're gonna do all that, you might as well do one of the courts you're resurfacing, rather than you already repainted the new court. And now you gotta scrape it all away and then put in new places for nets and everything.
Well, but I don't know that that's all.
Well, not, not for a temporary trial.
Not for a conversion.
Anything in permanent.
Yeah.
And actually, I don't even know for permanent that you have to. I think most of these places, when they've converted to pickleball, they have the movable nets that you can just roll out of the way. And then you, you can just paint over the tennis lines.
Yeah, you could do that. You could have a dual use.
It's, it's like an added, yeah, yeah.
I'm just saying, if you want permanent courts, yeah.
Only pickleball, that's a different.
Yeah, because you could probably put three courts on one, but you'd have to take the tennis nets away because of the two poles.
I think you're way ahead of yourself.
I know.
I know the timing. I start to see, I don't know for sure what we could do with the clay court, but I can at least start to get them.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I think that's wise.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the ones, the last question, we'll move on. One of the ones that are being resurfaced slated to be finished?
The ones right now? So the asphalt is done, they have to cure for three to four weeks. Then they will come back and do all the resurfacing. So they basically do the, the process we always have had done before in a week. So I would say in five weeks, those courts will be opening brand new gray courts, hopefully. That will never have to be done in my lifetime again. I'm so happy.
Unless we change.
Yes.
Unless we change it to pickleball.
So, yeah, so when that's done, then I will start getting the other two courts.
Are, has there been any, just another topic, just on things happening in the park? Is there any new reports on off-leash dog activity in terms of police, if they're picking people or?
I haven't got, well, I haven't received any other complaints. And the other person that complained, she said she's noticed that it's a lot better.
It's much better, yeah.
I really think what we did helped and pushed PD to enforce it. I really think.
Yeah.
It really helped.
It made a big difference. Thank you, everyone involved with that. Really good.
Right, we're also, I just heard from another staff person that we're enforcing a lot more citations.
The PD, the PD is, or, or the code enforcement.
They were doing a lot of verbal warnings, but I, I mean, that only works for so long, right? Especially if you're, if it's a lot of repeat offenders. So that, I, I guess they're, you're issuing citations.
Okay, great, revenue, okay.
That's different from what I heard. But I, what I heard was that the verbal warnings were incredibly effective and that they only had to give one citation, which would be a repeat offender.
Right.
But also, there was somebody who was a repeat offender, who got extremely rude to somebody who told them that they should have the guy's dog on a leash. And, yeah, I don't know if he got arrested or just a citation, but it, it got very out, out of control.
That's unbelievable, when there's signs and everything and somebody throws a fit like that.
I mean, I hear, previously, I won't, there were a lot of bad reports of just people being extremely rude to other people. It's ridiculous.
And are, are there any summer activities planned for the park this year?
Francesca?
I actually just asked.
Okay.
I did tell them that if we are, we need to get this happening soon. We're already in May, so the summer event to do start in early June. I'd like to get these, get these a month out, flyer and just kind of a newsletter and also. We do have a banner, a general banner that says summer events, but.
Okay. Oh, I'll wait for the Atherton Weekly.
There is an event, they should replicate everything that was done for Earth Day, since obviously that was a very successful campaign and had a lot of attendance.
Typically, the summer events are movie nights or like a band with food trucks.
So it would be one music in the park. And the next would be the movies. And then the music. And then we finish off with another music and then that leads us into National Night Out.
The music, I love the music thing.
Yeah, it'll be fun. Okay.
So you have all the financial reports. If you have any questions, let me know. You also have the calendar. Rentals seem to be picking up. The main house and pavilion seem to be rented out more on the weekends. So that's good. And that's all I have.
Sally, could I ask you a question about the financial report? When we get somebody from the town that prepares these to come and really explain them, I go over these numbers and it looks like we're, we've saved, we're only at 50% of the budget for cost. It looks like we're doing pretty close, still a little ways away on revenue. And then it looks like there was a deficiency of $432,000. And, and again, you know, why was the school dropped in their, in their revenue? And, and all these different categories. Like, again, the social fees that we talked about before, there's 15,000 budgeted and we've got $65,000 in revenue. I mean, these categories just need to explain. I'm sure somebody thinks in finance that, that they make sense and maybe they will do. But I think we should have somebody talk about this if we're supposed to be supervising and making recommendations, at least on finance. but I think we should have somebody talk about this, if we're supposed to be supervising and making recommendations, at least on finance.
Um, yes, I'll come, I, I mean, I'll ask them to come, I, and they might not, but I will ask them to come to one of our meetings, they can come on Zoom.
They've come before.
Okay, so I will definitely have somebody come. Susan Knox's and Matt went down because the council, um, during COVID allowed her to have a less, lesser rent.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Oh, that's good, thank you. Um, individual, seven D, individual committee member comments, um, I just have one about Earth Day. Uh, we got three people who signed up on our volunteer list, which is great. Um, I unfortunately wasn't able to be there, um, but we had our sign and we had a little cow and we got some interest, so it was good. Um, the idea of this is just to focus on an area of the park and do some weeding or something for a few hours, just to get involved, so. Um, I'll reach out to these people, probably saying, thank you for signing up, we'll let you know when the next event is, which could probably be later in the summer, so. So other than that, I don't have anything. I, I thought Earth Day was very well done, too. I, I don't know if there's things we can do about the, the crowds, because the parking was, I mean, I only went thirty minutes after the event started and parking was hard to find, uh, so.
Welcome to how it used to be.
Oh, that's how it used to be?
Uh, well, so, uh, when we had big things like that, we would allow people before the new civic center to park over here and walk.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, once the civic center opens.
I feel like if we did have another event like that, this, these parking lots will be open on the weekend and be empty, because it's the weekend.
Maybe have the vendors park here and then.
Park here, or sometimes, I think we've done a shuttle, or even, even parties have done a shuttle from here to there when parking. So yeah, it's, I, I realize that people park anywhere during those events.
Yeah, that's what I had to do.
And that would be, that would be a horrible parking situation, so I can't even imagine what it was like.
Yeah, just some, fix the parking situation, but I, I think once the civic center opens, we'll, we'll have that solved.
It'll be better, yeah.
Um, anyone else? All right, um, we're gonna meet on July, in July, is our next meeting.
For July six.
July six.
Yeah. July sixth, our next meeting. And, um, last part, number nine, adjourn, have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So move.
Second.
Second. Bye.
Bye. All right, guys, thank you, first meeting in first in two years.